So sorry. Let's go.
Grab your attention, please. We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for July 18th, 2022. The first matter on the agenda this evening with the minutes from approval are June 23rd, 2022. Any of the board members have any comments or corrections?
I wasn't at the meeting, so I won't be voting.
Okay. Chairman, you have any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Caleb, any questions? No, no questions. Okay, Bob, I think you're on Zoom. You were with us. Do you have any questions on the matter?
I have done. I have done. Everything is fine.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye. Aye. So we have four people voting, myself, Mr. Bichette, Caleb, and Bob, because we are the four that were present at the last meeting. Next matter on the agenda is continued business for site plan review with special permit. St. Louis School, 72-74 Bosworth Street and 353 West Sixth Street. ZR Development Group LLC has applied to the planning board and zoning board of appeals to redevelop the existing St. Louis School building into 19 residents with 24 off-street parking spaces. The application requires site plan review under section 11.4 to construct more than three dwelling units and special permit approval for the conversion of an existing historic school under section 8.1. The application also requires variances, approval under section 6.1 for relief from the off-street parking requirement, section 5.1 for relief from the land area per dwelling unit requirement, and usable open space requirement, and under section 8.134 for relief from minimum square footage requirement, and for any other relief under the Lowell zoning ordinance, which would be for the zoning board of appeals. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all the board members. For the record, my name is John Gary of Gary &amp; Gary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing ZR Development Group LLC. As the chairman mentioned, this is a request for a continuance. I had filed my formal request a couple of weeks ago with the planning department. We are before the zoning board of appeals a week from tonight on the 25th and then hope to work our way back here for September 8th. So that's the gist of the request, and I would hope that the board would entertain that request tonight.
Any of the board members have any questions? Attorney Gary? If not, what's the request of the board for the request for the continuance?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until September 8th.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Lockhart. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Bichette. All in favor say aye. Aye. Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. The law counselor. Thank you all. Moving along, we have a special permit for 22 Bellevue Street. Michaela has applied to the Lowell Planning Board to convert the existing two-family structure at the above address into a three-family structure. The subject property is located in traditional neighborhood multi-use zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval from the planning board per Article 121C to expand a residential structure to three units. Is the applicant present? Present, present. The applicant was not present at that last meeting, which we had on 6/23, so we gave the applicant the benefit of the doubt, and we continue the matter to tonight, and we gave notice that the applicant to be here. So we also have received notice from the ZBA that he had two requests for variances before them, and that had been denied because the applicant did not appear at either one of the public hearings for the zoning board of appeals. So therefore, when he was back before us, he asked for more additional time, and he was going to work on some landscape and a lot more of the parking layout for us, and we haven't heard anything from him since then. So, and the applicant's not present tonight, so I will make a motion that we deny the request for the special permit.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go ahead.
Just for discussion, just to ask, has DPD heard from the individual in all, the applicant?
We have.
Okay, you got the impression he understood what was going on, though?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other further discussion? No? So as indicated, I'll make the motion to deny the special permit. Mr. Lockhart, you second that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion is allowed, the matter will be denied. Moving along, we have a special permit on 50 Wentworth Ave. Tan Pham has applied to Lowell Planning Board for special permit approval to subdivide the existing lot at 50 Wentworth Ave and construct a new single-family home on the newly created lot. The subject property is located in the suburban single-family zoning district and requires special permit approval from the Lowell Planning Board pursuant to section 5.1.17 to reduce the minimum frontage by 12 feet. We had a public hearing two months ago, and then we were back here on June 23rd, and unfortunately, we didn't have the qualified four members present who were present before for the special permit, so unfortunately, we had to continue the matter. But tonight, we have a full board, so no problem. We should have to go forward and hear your request. Thank you, sir, if you'd go forward, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairmans and board members. My name is Tan Pham. As you know, I'm here for the continuance from May, from May hearing. The property we're talking about today is 50 Wentworth Ave. We have the approval from the zoning appeal last year. This parcel is really big. It's over, it's about 21,700 square feet. We plan to build a single family. If we got approved to subdivide, if approved, the newly subdivided lot will be bigger than about 70% of a adjacent properties in both frontage and area. So we're planning to build a single family on this newly subdivided lot. And in term of comments from the DPD, they are supportive of this proposal because their comments was, is minimal relief, and we already, we already got approved by the ZBA. So, that's all. Thank you.
Didn't you submit some new pictures since the last meeting as well?
Yes.
Of the proposed property with the fence around it and everything else?
Yes, we submitted the architectural plans and the updated survey plan, the grading plan, and Lowell Planning Board plan to Dylan.
Anything else you'd like to add, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anybody here that see that would like to speak in favor of the project on Wentworth Ave? Anybody in favor?
Yes, Elias Hatem at 43 Gold Street.
I know in the past meeting that we had two months ago, we had several people speak in favor, and then we had a few people speak in opposition, so.
Can you hear me okay?
We're just checking with LTC. Be right with you. We can hear the volume, but let me just check and bear with us a second. Yeah, yeah, you can go ahead, sir, if you would. I mean, state your name again for the beginning, I'm sorry.
Elias Hatem residing at 43 Gold Street. Mr. Chairman, distinguished committee members, I am in total agreement supporting Dr. Phan with his application for 50 Wentworth Ave. And my, the reason I did that, there are 25 properties with an average 9,571 square feet and about 75.91 a frontage. The new subdivided lots will be in the 80%, in 80 percentile, so he'll be, his lot will be on the top 20% of all the abutted lots. The second point, the carriage house, the footage, the footprint of the carriage house, it's 20 by 40. The new proposed lot will be 25 by 40, so that it's the same footprint you take in a eyesore carriage house, replacing it with a single-family house, which is a nice looking as you saw on the pictures submitted in the architectural plans. And not only it's a nicer, nicer, nicer home, but it creates a lot more, it doubles up the tax for the city of Lowell, which I'm sure you guys can appreciate this day and age with everything going up. And if you look at the carriage house as well as the garage, there are too many violations that took place over the years. Among them, there's six-inch pipes discharging, I don't know what kind of water from both places, and I like to make sure the approval is contingent on the carriage house going down and the city addressing the garage where it's going to be strictly for garage use, not for an apartment. And I am a little bit puzzled as well. In this case, Dr. Phan got, you know, so many back and forth, and it cost him a lot of money and time. While I reside in Gold Street, half of the street is being given to the right side of the street, as well as the street was divided between three residents. So it's hard to kind of process everything that's taking place. There is 26 Glenwood, 38 Glenwood, and 46 Gil. There's a big section of Gil Street was divided among those three homes, and it created a lot of issue for me personally because at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock, people come in with the loudspeakers, they turn in the driveway, we have security system, the security system goes off. I contacted the city a bunch of times, and they put a sign, it's a dead-end street. People GPS is not up to date, so I'm kind of a little bit puzzled on how we could, within 100 yards from each other, there is the strict requirements, but yet on the other side, there's a whole different thing. And as a senior program manager for intelligence, surveillance, and reconnaissance in foreign military, I am totally puzzled with the current plans where it doesn't state, the city does not state clearly all the stipulation that the carriage houses need to go down, the garage need to be used strictly as a garage, not as a residence. So if I was the senior program manager and I need to create a statement of work, I don't have all the information, the dots are not connected, and that's a big concern to me. In addition, a lot of people come in and stated they had issues with Dr. Phan integrity, his kids going to private school, he has two dental practices. I'm not sure what any of these have anything to do with the zoning. Everything he's asking for is within the guideline, and it makes sense for this committee to focus on the facts and the relevant facts. At the same time, I do respect for people's feeling and concerns, but this is not the form for it. In conclusion, I would like to understand how the dots going to be connected and how a clear statement of work is going to be in place. And I met Dr. Phan a few times. I don't know him that well, but I'm 100% in support of everything that he's doing. And the net for me as a neighbor, it will be a whole heck of a lot better place than it is today, because today is just like, I'm looking at a carriage house that's distraught, it's built right on my borderline, and it's nothing but issues. With that, I thank you for taking the time, and like I said, I'm 100% in support of Dr. Phan. At the same time, I would like to see a clear statement of work on what is the actual things that's going to take place, not just words. I want to see it in paper. I thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor of the project? Anyone else in favor? In favor, in favor? At this point in time, anybody like to speak in opposition? Just come to the microphone, please, if you would. You state your name and address for the record.
So I'm Nancy Canny, and I live at 50 Wentworth, I mean, 64 Wentworth, sorry. So I'm Lot C on the plan, okay? Thank you for letting me speak. So with, I just want to say with Mr. Hatem, what he just was talking about with the carriage house being torn down, but that's on a different lot. So that's, that's not the same lot that they want to build the home on. The home that they want to build on is Lot B, I think, and behind that is the garage, which he wants to leave up, which, in my opinion, should be condemned because there's broken windows, which we all talked about at the last meeting, about the upkeep of the property, which he hasn't done. The window's still broken, the shade's still hanging out. I see animals going in and out of there. It's, it's a mess. And I'm curious as to why he wants to leave that one building up, because if he didn't leave that up, he would have plenty of frontage to put the new home in, which would be great. So I don't have a problem like with the home, I just have a problem with how it's going to be built and where, and where it is going to be next to my property. I'm not a doctor, and I'm not in the military. I don't know all these things. I'm simple, okay? So I don't know how many feet there's supposed to be between his lot and mine. So like, when my lot ends, how far out does he have to be? How many feet before he can build, or can he build like right up against my property line?
Okay, so to answer your question, it's, so you're to the right of him, so you would be, so on this plan, it looks like Lot C, because you're in the corner of Glenwood, right?
Yes.
Okay, so in this neighborhood, it is what they call a sum of 25 feet, minimum of 10. So you'd have to have at least a minimum of 10 on one side.
Okay.
And then, so if that was the case, if he only had 10 on one side, then you'd have to have 15 on the other side, so that'd give him 25. So on this plan, what we have in front of us is, he will be 13.3 feet off your lot line.
Okay.
So what they're saying here is that, so if they have that 10, sum of 25, he has 24.8 on one side and 13.3 on the other side. So he meets the zoning requirement for the minimum lot line requirement. So as long as he has a minimum of 10 and has enough of 15 or more, then he meets the 25. So it can be divided up, you know, 12.5 and 12.5, as long as he has that 25. So to answer that, by the plans that he's submitted to us, it would be 13.3 feet from the edge of his house to your lot line, yes?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a couple of questions. So at the December 14th zoning board meeting, let's see. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm nervous.
That's okay, ma'am. Take your time. It's all right.
Okay, on October 26th, Member McCarthy asked Mr. Pham if he was the sole representative for the project, and Mr. Pham said that he was. But I'm confused by this because Mr. Pham was not the owner of the property at that time. It was Mr. Healy, and Mr. Healy signed the deed over to Griffin Lowell LLC, which I believe is his corporation or business, on November 11th in 2021. Then on the agenda request for the past hearing that we had, Mr. Lee signed the application saying that he was the owner, but at that time, Mr. Pham was the owner. So I don't, I feel like, I'm not sure what's going on here, but whoever's signing these documents saying that they're the owner and making all these promises, so whoever breaks the promise, he's going to say, well, I was, you know, that wasn't me. It's just confusing to me. Shouldn't his name be on?
Yes, he should either be on the deed, or sometimes what happens is if a lot of projects that come in front of us are contingent upon being approved, something like that, so sometimes if someone signs what's known as a purchase and sale agreement, so basically if I want to buy a house, but I want to tear down and add this here, I'll say I'll do it, but contingent, and I get approval from the board. So technically, if they have that legal document, that gives them what's called standing to come forward. So that means the owner's letting you come forward. I'm not sure what the exact situation is with Pimp, but we will definitely ask that question. But the other question would be, if we give the special permit, it runs with the land, doesn't matter who the owner is.
Okay.
So he sells it tomorrow, the other person comes in, this special permit stands.
Right, I understand that. My thing is if somebody's making a promise or signing documents saying that they're the owner at that time, and they're not, I think that's.
Yeah, so what, the side agreement they may have had, I don't know, we could ask the gentleman, he can probably hopefully clear that up for us, but like I said, so that would run with the land regardless of the special permit would be. So whoever owned it, they would be, it would be enforceable, same as if we approve it or deny it, but if we approved it and somebody else bought the property, that special permit stands regardless of who owns the property.
Okay.
Sure, if you don't mind, can you come to the microphone and answer it? That way, we can hear you a little better? Yeah, can he answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Now we're trying to figure that out now, so.
Yes, so just to answer your question, Healy is my father-in-law, and we, at first, we partnered up, and then if we got approved, then I planned to build the house, so it's my father-in-law, yeah.
Okay, so who owns the property?
So right now is Griffin Lowell LLC, which is me, yeah. I formed the LLC. But just like I said, I feel like the neighbors has to be fair to me, the people who oppose me, they should be fair to me, because I know they tried to do the research about what I do, where my kids go to school, you know, this and that, but it's not about who I am. Nobody knows who I am, you know, they don't know me enough, you know, sorry, I'm a little nervous too. I'm not very good at public speaking, but this is about subdivision, this is about the land. It's not about me, or it's, you know, just be fair to me, you know, it's, I don't think the, the request that we're asking for compared to all the similar projects, you know, Clocks Road, Chamber Street, and even the DDP made a comment about it too, it's minimal. It's, and then the, the house that we built, it's, it meets all the setbacks, it meets all the setbacks, and so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sure, we understand that, you know, with land regulators, we understand, you know, what the question is, it comes down to what the application stands for. Yeah, anything else, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Well, it's not, it's not personal. I'm just a single woman who purchased a home five years ago.
No, I think he was referring to some people at the last meeting that said something that may not have any personal to his taste, but.
That were the people who were not opposed, who said those things. People who are opposed, it is not about him personally.
Yep.
It's, it's about his transparency, because he, he changes things constantly, even on the plans that he brought to the last meeting weren't the same plans that he had at the, at the zoning board meeting. They change things up constantly. So I just want to know, like, what actually are you going to do? He has a single-family home. It's listed as a single-family in Haverhill, but he has a placard on the outside for his dental business. So once he is approved, I just want to make sure what he does.
Well, he's in a single-family residence, though. It has to be a single-family home.
Yeah, well.
If he does, if he puts up any other business here, just call the city hall and let them know, and then we shut them down.
No, but I don't.
I mean, they can't do it, I mean, you know? You know, just call the, you know, planning department, they'll steer you in the right direction, but I mean, it's, it's a single family, so basically, what, what he's requesting is just reduction of the lot frontage. I, I didn't know that he, I got part of the information last meeting that there was a lot of time spent at the ZBA, which I didn't know about, and people come in, spoke and said, you know, we've been here several times, you know, listen. Like, no, last time, the last meeting was, the public hearing was the first time we've heard this project. So I know it went before the ZBA on several occasions, and they gave approval with several conditions, which have to be enforced, and whatever we do tonight. So the only request he's asking for us is to give him 70, to reduce the frontage from 90 feet to 78 feet.
I understand that, and I, but I just feel like I need to be heard, because.
Oh, I understand.
You know, with the zoning board, I, I don't know what I'm doing. So I need, obviously, I'd need to get a lawyer to help me figure this out, but I just wanted to come and oppose.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Yes, speaking from Zoom. So can you hear me all right?
Yes.
So my name is Rebecca Caswell, and I'm with my husband, Patrick Olson, and we're at 74 Wentworth Avenue. At the last meeting, I spoke up as being opposed to the project based on the current condition of the building and the property, and after the meeting, I had a really nice conversation with Dr. Pham outside, and I let him know that if he fixed those problems and dealt with those problems, I would come back at the next meeting and be in support of the project. I would really like to say that that was the case today. While the lawn did finally get mowed, and I'm very appreciative of that, there are some exterior repairs to the building that I had pointed out to him after the meeting that he said he would take care of, and they haven't been taken care of. And that's the main reason that I'm opposed to the project, because I'm just not sure what kind of neighbor he plans to be. Also, because as he just mentioned, that the property is now owned by Griffin Lowell LLC, which is a company under which he operates a number of rental properties in Lowell, including 50 Wentworth Avenue, which he's currently renting out to tenants. And so I just have a question about whether or not this is going to turn into a single-family but a rental, where he's an absentee landlord and the exterior of the building continues to deteriorate. And that's my basis of my opposition to the project this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Yes, I would, I'm on Zoom here. My name is, uh, Jim Pollard. I live at 63 Wentworth Avenue with my wife, which is directly across the street from the proposed house. Even though Mr. Haddam spoke in favor of the project, uh, and I speak in opposition, we share some of the same concerns. And they were discussed in the previous meetings here with the planning board and the zoning board before that. And they are, as, uh, Mr. Haddam said, to have a clearer statement of whether or not the carriage house will in fact be demolished and that the garage on the other lot, uh, not be used for any residential purposes. Those are the two objections that I had going right from the beginning. That there's in one sentence, that as, uh, the applicant says, it's a sizable lot, but there are also on the two properties that are together, four sizable structures too. So that really is the essence of my, uh, concern. So that's why I was very interested in the demolition of the carriage house. And, uh, with the, uh, previous speaker, also that it not, that the garage not be used for residential purposes. I also just have, I don't know if it's a, it's a concern, maybe it's not addressed properly here. But there's a tree that's right on city property, it's right on what's grass now, but where, um, a sidewalk would be. And I don't know if that is planning to come down, I don't know if it's protected. Is that a different kind of hearing, is that a contingency? Can the tree be preserved, what is the plan? Period, that's basically what I have liked to say.
I'll let, I'll let the applicant speak on that, um, go ahead, sir.
So to answer that question, um, and I answered that before, the ZBA, one of the condition is to, uh, the carriage house will be raised and it is noted on the plan. That's one thing. And the second thing is the garage on the other side, uh, we will renovate it and make it into the garage for the newly built house. As that is noted in the architectural plans. So in term of, um, structure, right now we have three structure, but after we build, it will be like three structure too because the garage, carriage house, it has a 30 by 40 feet, which is rundown. And now we have a beautiful newly built house that is 35 by 40 footprint, that is clearly separated with a garage in the back from the other house. So I think it is an improvement from what we have right now, to be honest with you. We still have three structures, it's gonna look better. Yeah, so, so to, and in term of the tree that is on, uh, the street, uh, it belongs to the city. So even if we want to take it down, we can't, it, it belongs to the city.
Yeah, just to follow back up with what Mr. Haddam had said in originally, is there a clear statement of that? I, as you say, it's in the plans, um, in the, in the, the site plans. But is there any further statement that, that we can, uh, hang our hat on?
Yes, because once it is on the site plan, we have to do it as it is, or we don't get the, uh, the, um, the permit to build. We have to do it exactly like what is on the plan. The, the house is, uh, is drawn like, is drawn like that, it will be built like that. And it, what, whatever is noted in the plan, it will be just like that. Because we under, they don't approve us just, you know, just by saying it, you know, we have to go by the plan.
Is it reasonable then to, for me to assume that the carriage house will be raised before the, uh, new construction begins on your house?
Yes, um, that's what we planning to do because it would make sense for us to do that. Because when the carriage house is, uh, is raised, um, and we dig the foundation, we can use it as backfill to, for the carriage house. You know, that, that would make sense for us, uh, you know.
Uh, my wife has a question.
Hello, my name is Maureen, I also live at 63 Wentworth. My question is about the tree, again. Is there any, um, this is to the committee, not necessarily to Mr. Thun. Is there anything in place for an inspection for that tree before anything begins? My concern is asking for the variance for the building to be closer to Wentworth Street, Wentworth Ave, closer to the street. When I, I did call and spoke to the man who comes and does the tree thing. And he said that there is a very specific footage from the tree, how many feet back you can go to begin any excavating or building. And I don't know the follow-up to that, I don't know if anybody was gonna actually come in and inspect or see it. My concern was with the variance for the footage closer to the street, Mr. Thun isn't gonna have enough footage where he wants to build the tree, I mean, build the house to where the tree is. So I just wanted to know, is there, before an approval or denial is given, is there any, anything in place to have that checked first?
Just, uh, just to, um, to follow up to what I said earlier, that tree belonged to the city, we have no control over it. Even if we want to do something, we can't. And in term of setbacks, we have 25 feet setback from the street, 25 feet setback from the back, more than 25 feet from the size. That's why I said the, if approved, the newly, newly built house will meet all the setbacks, all the required setbacks. That's all I can answer because that tree, we can ask a homeowner, we cannot do anything because it does not belong to us. It do not be, it belongs to the city of Lowell, thank you.
So ma'am, just to answer your questions, basically, so under the zoning for the front yard setback, you need a minimum of 25 feet. He used to have 26 feet. So he meets the required minimum front yard setback. In regards to the tree, if any trees got to be removed in the city, um, they come forward for what's known as a tree haring. And that matter would have to come before us from the, the planning board. And the relief would have to be, if they take the tree down, then our rules and regulations indicate that they have to replace the tree, depending on how big it is, whether they do one size or two size, and whether they can do it in the same area, or they try to do it somewhere else in, um, existing neighborhood. Usually what will happen is if someone puts a request in to have a, um, tree removed, it usually goes through the department, um, public works department, and they come and they put an application before us, we have a public haring. And matter of fact, we have one coming in next meeting where there's one where the roots are actually digging into someone's sewage system. And the fact that the whole curb is dug up, they're requesting it to be removed because of the fact that people are tripping on it and the poor people who live in front of it, it's, um, creating sewer havoc for them. So that's on our agenda for next meeting. So basically for the tree to be removed, it'd have to be a public haring before this board for us to remove the tree. Once, um, request has been made by anybody in the city to the, um, public works department. And if they thought it was reasonable, they'd come in and file the application. And we would hear from all parties on either side where the tree should be removed. So it's not up to the gentleman to remove the tree, he has no authority to remove the tree, it's not on his land. And he does meet the required setback requirement. I hope that helps answer your question.
That's it for us, thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, sir, thank you ma'am. Anybody else like to be heard? Yes, just come to the microphone, state your name and address for record.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is George Skaaf for the record, uh, 503 Fletcher Street. The family house is behind the applicant's house on Glenwood. I don't know if you can see it in your little sketch, but it, um, it seems as though the zoning board, I mean, the zoning board missed a few items. And it, like, maybe I'm wrong, but the setbacks for the, for the garage, I understand the carriage house is being tore down, the setback, the rear setback for the garage is inadequate. And the side setback for the garage would also be inadequate. Cause it's my understanding that the, once the, um, applicant applies for permission for relief of something, the whole lot has to conform. Also, the original site plan and the updated site plan, um, there's a big difference between them. It seems that a lot of it was bleached, there's a few things missing, like the fruit trees, the sidewalk, um, the proposed handicap ramp, which also I don't think he can get removed because you can't unhandicap things. And, um, it seems that all over the world, there are, there are cities looking for green space. And, uh, here in Lowell, we're using it up to build homes, which is fine, but it's changing the character of the neighborhood. And it's, um, it's creating more density in that neighborhood. Sorry. And that's all I think I have to say for today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to be heard? Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to the board members, see if they have any questions. Any board members have any questions?
I have none.
Mr. Lockhart, no?
No.
Mr. Fischett, any question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And looking at the, um, what was submitted by the applicant, I would state it here, and part of the measurement we look at, when a petition like this comes before us and it, and it calls for it within the city zoning ordinance, as we look at, um, the surrounding lots, is it, does it fit in, uh, with the surrounding neighborhood and their, uh, and matter of fact, it is going to be larger than, um, than a fairly good percentage of the lots in the area. The frontage falls within the reduction, he's actually not looking for the maximum reduction of frontage. All of, as, as it came out in testimony, all of the setbacks comply, um, with the, uh, with the home that's being proposed. The, um, the rear garage, um, coming down, I think is, uh, is a positive, uh, development. And, um, from that perspective, I, I think, you know, we're looking at this site as a whole, so certainly we'd be looking to, and the applicant was correct, what gets approved here tonight is what has to be built. And that has to be complied with and that is monitored through the, uh, the building department as construction progresses. But we would be looking at the demolition of the, um, of the, the, and I guess call it the carriage house, but it's on, uh, on lot A1, and I think we just need to be clear on the different lots that we're looking at here. And that based on the elevations that were provided too. The applicant is to, um, rehab that existing, uh, garage, to complement the, um, main dwelling unit that's going to be built on lot, uh, B1. Interestingly enough, I think everybody commented concern and it was a condition of the zoning board of appeals, that the garage, a, a, you know, an apartment wouldn't be built there, this is a suburban, single-family zone. Just as a side note for residents that are concerned about what's going on in your neighborhood, the city is considering right now, and it's being talked about at the zoning subcommittee level, there's a meeting next Tuesday night, I believe at, at 5:30. Hopefully there'll be subsequent meetings, but to approve accessory dwelling units in the city of Lowell in single-family zones, and part of that would be detached units. So all of those carriage houses you're looking at in Belvedere and garages potentially under an ordinance like that could become an apartment, so for rent. And you certainly could have a family member living there, but you could rent it out to anybody. So I just put that on everybody's radar, cause everybody that spoke here tonight seemed to be concerned about that. And that would be a condition, that's something that's being looked at right now across the city in single-family zones. So I think, you know, there needs to be some discussion and, and citizen engagement on that issue, especially where, again, everybody expressed the concern and the ZBA made that a condition. So I, I found that interesting as I sat here this evening. So I will say the applicant did provide the elevations, which were, we did not, uh, receive at the last meeting. You know, the, the home appears to be fit, fitting into the neighborhood. And certainly, um, and that's part of the requirement, we want to make sure that it is going to fit into the neighborhood. So with what's been proposed, I certainly, Mr. Chairman, um, again, there is, he's complied with the request for, and the only thing we're approving here is the reduced, uh, frontage. There's no other waiver that, uh, the applicant is looking for. And, um, at this point, he, the applicant could have come before us for a subdivision approval instead, went through to the special permit. So, and that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Caleb, any questions?
So I, I also read in the staff report that the ZBA have three stipulations, so, uh, I will propose to have those three conditions, uh, as part of this approval as well, if, uh, the board approves it. And also I think we're iterating, uh, Mr. Fischett's, uh, observation about what the, uh, ongoing discussion about housing. I think, uh, the, uh, all of the neighbors who, who are concerned about neighborhood characters, um, should get involved in, in that conversation. Certainly green space and existing condition, uh, and I would say, um, character of neighborhoods are important, but, uh, housing is also a pressing issue and that's why not, not night, uh, discussion. But, uh, I think, uh, everyone, um, concerned about it should, should be part of that conversation. And then, um, I think I agree with, uh, Mr. Fischett with, um, the requests of the applicant, uh, being within the, um, the, what is allowed, um, by the special permit and, um, and, uh, the plan is also reasonable, uh, in my opinion. So, um, that's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Caleb. Ms. Galvin, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, I just have a couple of comments. Um, I thought that maybe I could answer one of the, um, one of the neighbors' questions and maybe Fran can do a better job, but I just thought, um, I could answer some of the questions that were raised. One was the, um, the garage doesn't meet the setbacks that are required. And because it's an existing structure, it's an existing non-conforming structure, it doesn't have to meet those setbacks because it's existing conditions. Um, and then the other item was the handicap ramp, and because it's a private residence, it doesn't need to be accessible. Um, if it was a public, for example, a public, um, place, if you're welcoming in the public, then it would be accessible. But because it's a private residence, it doesn't have to be. Um, and then, so that's my understanding of the building code. Um, and then I just wanted to also say that I'm in favor of this project and thank the applicant for the updated site plans, um, that did demonstrate, um, that the carriage house would be demolished as part of this project. So I'm in favor of that, um, being considered as a condition or just confirmed. And then also the requirement that the ZBA put on, put on the approval that the garage on lot B2 cannot be converted into a dwelling unit, I'm in support of that also. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Valovich, I know we have you on Zoom, do you have any questions, Bob?
Not really, uh, I think people have indicated, what other members of the board have indicated, what, I agree with. I like the project too. But I can't vote on it tonight because I didn't appear, even though I saw the, the main, main, uh, board meeting. I have an affidavit here, but I. I have an affidavit here, but I haven't gotten it to the city, so I can't vote tonight.
Well, we have five members who can vote then, so you can abstain. And Ms. Galvin, as you all can vote, because she's been at the two public hearings. All right, thank you, Bob.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Fischette, yeah.
One item I did neglect to mention is, again, looking at the elevations and I thought the design of the house was appropriate, but to the applicant, if, I'm hoping that fence was just a symbolic fence because I really don't like the fence that's around this house. Can you elaborate a little bit on the fence that you're looking to put around the site?
Yes, so we, we're planning because at the ZBA, some of the neighbors were concerned about privacy and stuff like that, so we tried to put a fence in. But, I mean, if you prefer not to have a fence, then, then we can put a condition on it.
I mean, the ZBA did not make that a condition, right? And it's not on the site plan. I know it's on the elevation that was submitted, but, you know, I mean, what type of fence are you looking to put from the, from the, from the diagrams that you've presented here? Again, it's, it's not very, aesthetically, it's not a very good-looking fence. I'm just curious as to what you're looking to put.
Mostly the vinyl fence, but if you think, if you think it fits in better with the neighborhood, with our fence, then we can accommodate that.
Yeah, I just, pardon me while I just take a look at the photos of the neighborhood that I took when I was out there, so.
I don't know if we have anything in zoning about fences. It looks like an appropriate side and rear yard fence, but I agree that as a front yard fence, it doesn't look appropriate. I'm not sure if we have anything in zoning regarding fencing.
I know we have a restriction on the height requirement. We've been down that road a few times. Well, one minute, ma'am, just let, no, no problem. No, it's okay. Mr. Fischette's looking through some of his pictures to finish up on his question. He takes a lot of pictures when he goes to sites to visit.
I have that tree on the sidewalk.
Yeah, he showed it to me.
I mean, you know, I don't see that where that's really needed to be consistent with the neighborhood, so perhaps, as a matter of fact, I'm looking at all the streets, the houses down the street and I don't, I don't see fences around the yard like that.
Yeah, I don't think any houses in that neighborhood has fences.
That's on the existing home. There's white vinyl on the existing home on the left-hand side, but.
So can I? I mean, just like my house, I think people don't usually fence in their front yard, usually just the backyard. And so, I mean, I mean, if the fence can start on the side of the house, that's, might be one improvement.
Okay.
You don't, I mean, I guess the house is built for street appeal and you put a fence in front of it.
Okay, so we would be, we can certainly accommodate where we put a side fence, just from the neighbor, if you want.
Can we hear from, can we hear what she has to say because I think she's the neighbor to the right. Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Because on the zoning board plan, he said that he was going to put a fence in between the new house and my house. But now, there's no fence there.
No, he submitted renderings to us.
He submitted renderings.
He showed to us what he proposed by the fence. It's in the application.
Because on the last one, when I came, there wasn't a fence there.
No, because at the last meeting, we requested updates for what the architectural plans were going to look like and everything else, and that's what Mr. Fischette requested because we like to see what the house is going to look like to see if, how it fits in with the neighborhood is part of the reason for the special permit. So that's why Mr. Fischette requested renderings and we got several, so this is the first time we saw him, because these plans were additional follow-up as related to the questions that we had back in the May meeting.
Have you seen these plans at all? So can I?
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to show, I just want to show real quick.
She saw it from the zoning appeal, I believe, because this is the same drawing from zoning appeal. It's like, we, I'm not running away from putting a fence. It's just a discussion here whether you want us to put a side fence or fence on, then we can do that too. You know, this, because when we go to zoning appeal, they ask us for architectural plan, it is the same plan for zoning appeal. We don't change anything because a house is supposed to be built like that. It's the same plans. And by the way, when we get approval from zoning appeal, we have to go by that too, Nancy. We cannot like change it or anything. So it's the same house that you see a year ago.
No, I think that the issue is with the fence and I think we've resolved, and I can understand the privacy fence and we've approved projects with, with privacy fence. We've even had subdivisions come through and request, request that. So certainly, I think on, on the, on both the, the abutting Lot C and abutting Lot A1, on the proposed lot is to have a privacy fence on, on each one of those lot lines, but not to continue that in the front of the house.
Okay.
It just doesn't aesthetically, it doesn't look nice.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree because it's a, the house is going to be beautiful. It's a newly built house, so I think it's increased the neighborhood, you know, look if we don't fence.
Yeah, right now, this will take away from the curb appeal, actually, I think, so, yep.
So just the two sides, from the right and the left. Thank you.
I mean, you can wrap the fence just in at the side of the house too, if you want it and close, right? But, so, just an idea.
Any board members have any further comments? If not, must the request for the relief for the special permit?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the request for the special permit incorporating the conditions previously imposed on the project as approved by the zoning board of appeals. Just for clarification though, because the plan that was submitted to us regarding the actual designation of the lots versus the lot designation in the zoning board of appeals. So based on the site plan dated September 15th, 2020, that was submitted, with the breakdown of the lots, we're referring to Lot B1, which I believe is the, Lot B2 is what the ZBA was referring to. I just want to make sure we're consistent and we're talking about the same thing. And then I would impose the, look to impose the conditions that the carriage house on Lot, where the existing home sits today, Lot A1, to be removed and the foundation and slab to be removed. And that the existing garage on the new lot being formed, Lot B1, to be rehabbed to match and complement the new dwelling on Lot B1. And that the applicant shall place a privacy fence, is it white vinyl that you're putting? White, white vinyl privacy fence on the lot line abutting Lot C and the lot line abutting Lot A1.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I have another question.
Sure.
I never saw, I don't know exactly where my land is, okay? And I never saw any little flags, you know, when they come and do the surveys? So even if I'm looking at those plans, I'm not really sure how accurate those plans are, so does, is there like, was there a survey done that I can look at too?
Sure, there would have been the, we have a copy of a survey here about AO Surveying, right?
We have the certified plan to be given to the engineering office too, if it is approved. So it is, I mean, obviously, you're not there 24/7, so when, when they come to do the survey,
Fran, could we get an extra copy of this surveying plan for lately? Okay. If you want to call Planning and Development, she can mail you out one. If you want to call Planning and Development, Fran here, Fran's our senior planner, she can mail you out a copy of the surveying plan by AO Surveying. AO, yeah. Yeah, so just call and ask for Fran and she can give you a copy of that, ma'am. That way, you can have it as well and it'll show you where your property line would be. Okay, so, I'm sorry, so Jerry made the motion and?
I'll second the motion.
Motion was made by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. So Fran, Bob wasn't voting, just the five of us here, okay? We got that? Okay, so the motion is approved for the special permit. Good luck, everybody. Thank you for your input and thank you very much. Moving along on the agenda, we have a request for a minor modification request, 153 Willie Street and 4-8 Wigan Street. The applicant is seeking a minor modification to reduce the total number of units to 10 and make the proposal entirely zoning compliant. The application received site plan approval on March 21st, 2022, before the Lowell Planning Board for 12 residential units on site. May we hear from the applicant, please?
For the record, Mr. Chairman, Attorney George Theodore, 133 Market Street, representing the applicant, Lynn Lowell LLC. Yes, that is correct. We were before the planning board and obtained approval for, a site plan approval for 12 units. Part of that application also required to go before the zoning board is we didn't have all the parking on site. We needed to obtain the variance for five parking spaces. The zoning board at the hearing, the zoning board made it clear to us that they did not like the density of the project and did not like the density that would require the five parking spaces, in a sense, what we would be overcrowding the neighborhood. As a result, we went back from the original plan that we had, which had seven units, a building with seven units at the rear of the lot and five units in the front of the lot, 12 units. Part of the approval that we had at that time is that we agreed to make improvements and build the sidewalk along Willie Street, which is adjacent to the front of the property, and to create parking spaces, four parking, five parking spaces there. We've redone this plan. We've changed the rear building, we've decreased that from seven units to six units. The front building, we've decreased that by one unit where it's going to be four units. And as a result of that, we created additional parking to satisfy the parking for the development of 20 units. In addition, as part of this plan, and this is going back, we went back to DPD and had this reviewed, that we made, we, we kept consistent, our promise to make the improvements and build the sidewalk out on Willie Street, the public, the public improvements, which we're going to do, and we are also going to create those parking spaces. Those are public spaces. Those are not going to be earmarked for this project. We're not asking for them to be earmarked for the project. We're making those improvements as part of offering that to the city as, as, as part of our development of this project because we have enough parking on the site. And also, you're going to be hearing from David Fieldsen from Landplex Development, who can go through the intricacies of the plan itself, where we have also included a, another entrance off of, onto Wigan Street. Oh, it's another, it's an exit, I'm sorry. It's not an entrance, it's used explicitly as an exit so that it allows for a better traffic flow on the site. Now, this has been a long-term project where we, we had been before this board a couple of years ago, in which we, we asked for and we obtained a zoning change, in which we, we obtained the zoning change to allow this to go through, in which we've been working with the city of Lowell. And the city of Lowell, we have to purchase a portion of this property from the city, which has been deemed to be surplus property by the city council. They have done a, an appraisal on the property of $55,000, where we're entering into an agreement now to purchase that property as part of this. And also, it goes back into the acreage development plan in which this specific parcel was earmarked for development by the city for residential development. Part of what we're doing is, we are going to be doing the residential development of this property and as a result, DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, we had to make an, or the city of Lowell had to make an application with them to request that this parcel be removed from the acre plan, and that was done. So we are back before you on this plan, which is zoning compliant. We have deemed this with DPD to be a minor development, to decrease it from the 12 units to the 10 units and to place all of the parking on the site. So if you have any specific site questions, David is here to answer some of those. Be happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add to that, David? Or did counsel cover it pretty well unless we have to ask you some questions? Thank you. Thank you. Anybody here this evening want to speak and we got to this project? Anybody want to speak? Anybody want to be heard? Okay, hearing that, any of the board members have any questions? If not, I'll start. I mean, obviously, we approved it of the 12 units, so cutting it back down and making it smaller, I have no objections to. And I know you had the parking in the front before, but now you don't need that, but you're still going to put it there for anybody who may need it, huh?
We are, we're still going to make that improvement and it's not going to be, we're not going to be asking the city council earmark for, for use by our project.
Which would help out any type of congestion in the neighborhood for other people to park, so you're actually helping out the fellow neighbors.
That's right. It helps the neighborhood.
Yeah, and then it also may help any guest parking as people have, you know, you have enough by zoning, but I know sometimes people have anniversaries, graduations, you know, relatives over, whatever it may be, so there'd be extra parking in the neighborhood. Yeah, but I mean, I have no problem with it due to the fact that you're reducing it down to what we've already approved, so. I think everything else is satisfactory to me, so. Any other board members, question?
I think you've done a really nice job in developing that kind of a difficult parcel. I like the project.
Like you told me before, it has quite a bit of a slope, right?
Yeah, it does. It has quite a bit of slope. Mr. Briasi.
We spent some time on that last.
Here tonight, I look forward to, to the development when it gets started, see what it looks like.
Yeah. Any other, people have any questions on the matter?
Mr. Chairman, I just would commend them, because I know with the relief they were looking for, part of the offset was to have that at parking, that you were creating, the sidewalk that you talked about.
Yeah, which is helpful.
And you still are doing all of that, so.
We still are.
Yeah, so.
We think it's an important component to it, so.
Okay, so first of all, I'll make a motion that this is considered a minor modification, and it's not a substantial and material change.
I'll second the motion.
A motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bob. So that's our first vote, now we need the second vote, would be to approve the amended site plan. I'll make a motion that we approve the amended site plan.
I'll second that as well.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, you approve, good luck.
Thank you very much, have a.
Thank you for your hard work on this, I mean, I know it was a difficult site, I remember going there looking at it the first time, and saying, wow. Yeah, but I mean, to keep that stuff on the site, like you said you were going to do, I give you a lot of credit, I really do.
Thanks.
You're welcome, good luck. Okay, so we have a special permit request on 113 Walker Street. The applicant is seeking an extension for their site plan review with special permit approvals, which have been delayed due to cross-construction. The original approvals were issued on July 27th, 2020. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board. My name's John Norton, I am the applicant and the owner at 113 Walker Street. I'm seeking approval for an extension for hopefully two years over at the, at the site. It was originally approved in July of 2020. The construction costs have been pretty, pretty expensive lately, and they're just starting to come down, so that's the main reason why I'm looking for an extension.
We did receive one comment, I don't know if you saw that, from Joseph Cad, Katie?
I did see that.
Okay.
And that is something that I'm going to reach out to them on this week.
Yeah, it just, it just says, just for people who are watching or paying attention, or
Yep.
don't have a copy of, just say this is from the city engineer. No objection to requests for the extension of the permit, but Walker Street will most likely be paved in 2023. When the street is paved, there'll be a five-year no excavation moratorium on Walker Street. The developer should consider completing the project before that time, or complete all work within the right of way before the street is paved, so.
Right. Yeah, that's definitely a priority.
Got to get that done before you do the work in the back?
Exactly, I want to get that done as soon as I can, so. And actually, that kind of leads me to one other brief question. So, in the last year or so, I've been talking directly with the neighbors, and if you guys remember, this was a longer approval process. And, you know, I've built a pretty good relationship with the neighbors, and trying to determine what was the, what could I improve on? And I actually have been working on a revised plan. But my concern now is, now that I have talked to all the neighbors and, you know, the neighborhood groups, I haven't talked to DPD yet, but now that I saw this comment from engineering on the paving, my concern is, I'd like to try to make everybody happy over there on Walker Street, but I'm hesitant, given the last experience. So.
Like quit while you're ahead, you mean?
What's that?
You quit while you're ahead?
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so do I cut my losses here, or do I, you know, try to, try to make it, try to do a better project? So, I just, or, you know, better in terms of what the neighbors like, so I'm trying to appeal to everybody. Obviously, this is very preliminary, I've done a lot of work on my end, but
Yeah.
I'm trying to, to balancing act in terms of, in terms of trying to determine, the paving is now my biggest concern, which I just learned of last week, so.
So part of that, I mean, I don't know what your concerns are, but sometimes you can do, like the last gentleman did, a minor modification, which, see, so on that, that's how we had the vote, first to see if there's material substantial change.
Yeah.
If it is, then we go to the public hearing again.
Right, right.
If it's a minor one, so.
Yeah.
And on that one, as you can tell,
Yeah.
it was a bigger project being reduced, and we approved the bigger, so the smaller one,
Right.
most of the time, we have no objections for it.
Right, yeah.
And actually, they were doing a lot of exterior work to the site.
Yeah, so, so this was, obviously, we approved four, you guys approved four duplexes. This would be two, two lots as well, to meet the dimensional requirements. You know, I was, I was potentially considering doing a triplex on one lot and a six unit on separate lot. Instead of doing, so instead of having four buildings, we'd have two larger buildings. And the, the feedback has been very supportive so far, just because the buildings are further away from the property lines, it, you know, feels less dense, there's more parking, we have four parking spaces per unit, at least in my preliminary plan here,
Sure.
that I did, and I didn't have an engineer do, but I, I just, my concern is if I try to appease everybody and come back, that I might miss the window to pave, so.
Sure, yeah. And then you might please some people who were in opposition before, but
Right.
they might be happy now, but other people might be.
That's true.
But you don't know about it when it comes to the public hearing.
So, I mean, I guess I can ask Fran, and maybe see, meet with them this, you know, the next.
Get some thoughts from planning staff.
Exactly, so, but I would.
And I know you're always very helpful for that, huh?
Always, yeah, and Fran was involved with the last approval, so, and, and not to.
We like to hear that.
Not, not to blindside Fran, because I haven't discussed this with her, but, you know, just want.
Yeah, then you say, now I get this moratorium, I mean, if I change this, I'll, I may have to wait five years before I start doing.
Well, yeah, that's a non-starter, obviously, so.
Yeah, so that's kind of, yeah, at least you got that comment anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Gives you some parameters which way you want to go, but.
So, but anyway, I appreciate, you know, if there's an extension, just given, you know, the.
Do you need a particular?
Well, really, the time period would really be, the, the opening up the road is really going to determine my timeline now.
See, so what we usually do is he put a time on it, you wanted two-year extensions?
I'd appreciate it, too, if I can get everything off the street, obviously, as soon as I can. And then, you know, I'd like to start in the fall, as prices have come down materially in terms of cost, so. But at the same time, I'd also like to try to see if there's another avenue that, you know, the neighbors would be more. I want it to be a long-term project and long-term hold, so.
So, that effect I mentioned before, would you have four and four, you said?
We did, yeah, four and four.
Right, so now you want to do four and two?
I want to do three and six.
Oh, three and six.
So it'd be one more unit, but there'd be, it would be a triplex and a six unit. It would fit in with the neighborhood, in terms of be like a triple-decker, and basically two triple, triple-deckers combined. And I have, I have renderings here, I just don't know how the board would handle that, or in terms of planning, would that be a major modification, or would that be considered a minor, it's, you know.
Yeah, we'd have to see.
That's, that's the big question, I think, for here, so.
Yeah, I'd say, if you're running with DPD, get some thoughts from them, and.
Okay, awesome.
They might have some suggestions to.
Yeah, yeah, that was my next step, and like I said, I didn't mean to blindside anybody here, but
Yeah.
the comment is really what, you know, is my biggest concern from engineering.
And the board members have any questions or comments? If not, I'll make a motion that we grant it an extension for an additional two years. Do we need a date on that, Fran, or you just put it out two years from the, at the end of the last approval?
I think it was July 20th, 2020.
Right, two years from the last, okay. So I'll make a motion that we extend the time period for an additional two years. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to talk to my Mr. Malovich, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Any opposition, hearing none? Good luck with your extension.
Thank you.
You've got a lot to think about.
I do have a lot to think about.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so moving along on the agenda, I believe we have a request to put Dylan on as a signature? An applicant, right? Yeah, let me come up. Sure. Okay. So, we have the board's vote to authorize Dylan Ricka as a planning board administrator, with signature authority, which will allow Mr. Ricka to sign approvals not required plans on behalf of the planning board. Any board members have any questions on that?
Just to Fran, does he come with your recommendation, Fran, or? Okay, okay, all right. Okay.
So we need a motion for Dylan?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote yes, hearing none, your opposition, hearing none, that motion carries. Any further comments from board members or updates?
I have an update from the historic board, I, I want to precede, I want to read a little bit of our past minutes. I just want to state, you know, the position, the posture of the historic board is to help and support building owners and downtown businesses with, whether it be signage or picking out proper historically, historic colors for their, their facade improvements. We, in the past few meetings, have been emphasizing minimum maintenance requirements, and I have mentioned that in the past. There are published minimum maintenance requirements for buildings and business owners within historic district downtown. And I just want to read this, because it's well stated, and it says what I want to say. "The board's recent minimum maintenance actions continue to reap success with the work being completed at 123 Merrimack Street to address storefront repairs and repainting, while similar work is underway at the Heldrich Building at 45 Merrimack Street, and the Thompson Building at 133 Merrimack Street. It is expected that the work on the storefronts at the Wells Block at 169 Merrimack Street will be underway shortly. All of these minimum maintenance projects will be completed by the beginning of the last week of July. And I think that's kind of time to coincide with the festival." And then it said, "With regard to the Saab Building at 147 Central Street, as you recall, the board voted at the June 13th meeting to find that violations existed, and that a fine of $100 for each of the seven violations would begin to accrue daily. Certified mail card is not, has yet to be returned, and once it does, fines will begin to accrue, and the case will be sent to the law department after seven days to seek compliance in Superior Court." So, administrator is, you know, he walks around and knows these things, and helps people comply, and yet we're not afraid to, you know, lean on others that are giving these minimum maintenance requirements, you know, pressure. That's all, I just want to.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart, Mr. Fischett?
Mr. Chairman, just, just to put on, something on everybody's radar, I did speak at the zoning subcommittee meeting probably about three weeks ago, and, and it just, you know, I wasn't even going to mention anything, but it was interesting this evening's petition on Wentworth regarding accessory dwelling units. And it's been something that's been brewing for a while and being discussed, and I know many of the nonprofits and housing advocacy groups have been working in an effort to, to move these forward, and the, some of the city councils have been looking at it, and it's, it's gotten to a point where the, the issue is very, very clouded. It allows for apartments that can be rented by anybody in a single-family zone, so now, you know, and this is looked at across the country to create housing. And, you know, we have unique neighborhoods, we have, I live in a small post-World War II neighborhood. My house is 16,000 square, uh, 1,600 square feet, 16,000. And most of the homes on my street are small capes and ranches, and, you know, 10,000 square foot lot, and and quite frankly, there are communities across the country that would kill to have neighborhoods like that. They're either McMansions, or they're densely populated, you know, apartments. In essence, you're looking at going into these single-family zones and allowing people to put an accessory dwelling unit. So now it's being couched with, obviously, it's, you can have a relative live there, you can age in place, and then it comes to the technicality, if you can have two kitchens in your house as we speak, you can have a suite, as long as it flows through the main dwelling unit, that exists as we speak, so it's very confused. I will say that some councils have been confused in how they explain this to their constituents, and the conversation is just starting on this, although DPD did draft a, an ordinance for the subcommittee to discuss next Tuesday at 5:30. I just think citizen engagement is going to be huge, people don't understand it. And the reality of it is, these carriage houses and garages in Belvedere, the whole idea is people can put apartments in them, and you can advertise for them and rent them out, or you can, or you can contact some of these agencies and say, hey, you know, I have an apartment for rent, you have people that need an apartment, so. It, it's being implemented in, in areas, and see, and it's not a one-size-fits-all, so there's some community, you, Dunstable has it. Well, show me how many multifamily homes exist in Dunstable, right? How many apartment buildings do they have in Dunstable? And so, it, it, you know, it allows somebody with five acres of land and an old Victorian farmhouse to have an apartment. And so when you consider, you know, we've got nice little post-World War II neighborhoods and developments, and trying to apply that in there, I think it has its challenges. Every voice has to be heard on this. I think it's going to be very, very important, you know, we need housing, but do we want to invade the, you know, and create this housing in the single-family zones? Or do we create them in, in, in other manner? So, and the aging in place, and it gets couched with that, and it gets very confused, right? Because you talk about, you know, a place for maybe your children to live, and, or maybe mom to live, but you can do that, and this problem is, is there are people that want to do that, maybe over their garage, to have mom live in it, but the idea is this opens the door across the board. And then if you restrict it, then how much oversight do you have? Right, it's huge to try to keep track of, well, is it really owner occupied, is it really a relative that lives there? Is it, it's monumental. So the discussion is, I did speak at the zoning subcommittee meeting, and I, you know, I've been involved in zoning in the city since 1997. This is, this is the largest sweeping change that's ever been discussed here in the City of Lowell. And it needs to be understood by the people that pay taxes, because it's all of the single-family zones, suburban single-family zones, they don't know if they're going to apply it, now they got to start the conversation, right? The whole idea is if you buy into the argument of it's to really, in, in some parts of the country, it's to help poorer neighborhoods build wealth and have people living there. Well, now, if we don't require parking, or do we require parking, do we eliminate it in the denser, denser neighborhoods? But the denser neighborhoods ever tends to be the poorer neighborhoods. So if you really buy into the benefit of this, are you saying that those poor neighborhoods don't have, unafforded the benefit of having mom being able to, you know? So the argument gets very clouded, the average person can't understand it, and it's going to require everybody, you know, providing clarity in the discussion. And if, you know, the council or advocates, see, look at, stand up proudly and say, we want you to be able to put apartments in your single-family homes, well, then, you know, it has to be very clear to people what's going on, so. Anyways, that's, keep that on your radar, because eventually, if it's crafted, it may end up before this body, obviously, for a non-binding recommendation from the council.
And the other thing, if you follow up on that, if you have a single-family residence, and then you put another unit on the property. So now if you have children who want to buy the parents' house, now they have the house, and now they have the extra unit, now they can't afford that house, because that price has just gone sky high.
That's exactly correct, Mr. Chairman, and that's my concern.
So now, say the house is worth $500,000, and rough ballpark, or maybe 400, whatever, you put an accessory dwelling unit on the property, it's going to go up, and go up, and so now, you're saying mom, or the children, like a lot of people say, you know, my parents are moving out, they're getting old, I want to buy it off my parent, or if they don't sell it to them, they sell it to somebody else, and we all just say, oh, you can get a lot more money for this now. So the people who still want to stay in the city might not be able to, because they're getting forced out, because they can't afford it now, because now that extra unit on the house, it raised the value so high.
If, if, in my neighborhood, Mr. Chairman, if you can't buy a single-family home in my neighborhood, you can't buy one in the greater Lowell area, so. In the last two years, the house across the street from me, next to me, in butts of a portion of my rear property, all sold, two of them were in the high 300s, one was, was just a little over 400. They were all families of color, okay? One family was just in this, has just been in this country for six years, a middlesex street, was able to buy. The family actually lived in the acre, not far from the firefighters' club, and they were able to buy, and it's actually the parents and the son. And the other family actually comes from Winthrop, and they were thrilled to be able to buy. You start adding an accessory dwelling unit to that and have potential income, you're actually correct. The, the, now the barrier to buy into that neighborhood, that, that price of that home is going to go up, so. There's, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of moving parts to this, it's very complex. It, it fits in some communities, and it does. It fits in some communities, and it doesn't in others. We have so much diverse housing in this, in this community. We need to create some more housing, but we need to speak regionally too, because we have a housing demand here, because a lot of our neighbors aren't doing their part to house a lot of people. So, there's a greater discussion, it just needs to be on everybody's radar, it needs to be discussed openly, clearly. This is 2022, we're the fourth and fifth largest municipality, it changes very, in the state, and I just, I'm calling for transparency and clarity on this issue. Call it what it is, stand proudly wherever you are on each side of this, and then, you know, people have to get involved. They just have to get involved, so.
All right, thank you. Any other board members have any follow-up? Anything from Fran? Any discussion for the board, or we all said? No? Okay, so we can entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Fichette. All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Good night, and thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night. Thank you, thank you everybody this evening for all your input and all your hard work. Thank you, Fran. Sure.
This is huge.